All right, I'll call the Willets City Council General Meeting back into order. We were in closed session and we will reconvene into closed session after we complete our regular session here this evening. Shall we do the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we'll take a roll call. Councilmember Connie Strong Stransky Gonzalez Mayor Rodriguez, present. All right, this next order of business is public communication. During public communication, the City Council welcomes input from the audience. If there's a matter of business on the agenda that you're interested in, you may address the council when this matter is considered. If you wish to speak on a matter that is not on the agenda, you may do so at this time. No action can be taken on non-agendized items during this period. Members of the public are asked to observe the rules of decorum, and those rules are also noted in the agenda. If you'd like a copy of the agenda, there is one at the door. Do we have anybody from the public that would like to address us? Yeah, if you would step up over here, and then you'll have three minutes to speak, and it's always nice if you're able to state your name.
Okay, thank you so much.
Yeah.
Hi, thank you all for hearing my comment today. My name is Catherine Flink, and I've been a Willets resident since 2017. I'm a vegetable farmer here in Willets and a case manager at a family resource center in Ukiah. And I'm here today advocating for the City Council to agendize and pass a resolution calling on our Democratic leaders to use their power to push for a ceasefire in Gaza. I, like many Willets and Mendocino residents, have been overwhelmed the past month with the humanitarian crisis happening in Gaza with the support of our tax dollars. With over 32,000 people killed and hundreds of thousands more at immediate risk of starvation, I feel it my responsibility to advocate that the U.S. government push with the utmost of its capabilities for a ceasefire, the unrestricted allowance of aid and medical supplies to Gazans, and an end to U.S. funding of the Israeli military, and a permanent just resolution. I'm not deluded that our small town can impact international events, but I think it important we add our name to the growing number of jurisdictions across our county, region, country, and the world, calling out for our leaders to listen and heed our demands. I have here a list of cities calling out for a ceasefire. In California, they include Davis, Cotati, Cudahy, Modera, Santa Cruz, Long Beach, Montebello, Pomona, Richmond, Oakland, San Francisco, Hayward, and most recently, Fort Bragg. Additionally, the Mendocino County Board of Supervisors and Ukiah City Council will vote on the issue at their next meetings. And some might argue that focusing on an issue we cannot directly address detracts from focusing on other important local issues, but I believe it is the opposite. I see an opportunity to bring us together and open up conversations about our values as a community, allowing us to better address issues we can directly impact. It would also allow us to connect ourselves to the larger world and be active participants in our country's democratic systems. In addition, with it requiring no funding or overwhelming amounts of administrative work, I don't believe it would seriously detract from our energy to focus on other topics. In a situation as grave as this, I think it important we exercise our ability to speak out and advocate for peace and justice. Thank you for hearing and considering my comments. I ask that the council agendize voting on a resolution at your next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Eva King. I have lived in Willets for over 10 years now, and I consider myself to be a really dedicated member of this community, as someone who is deeply committed to democratic policy and the role of public figures to represent public will. I stand here to advocate for Willets to make a stance and make a resolution for a ceasefire in Gaza. According to a recent Data for Progress poll, 67% of voters call for an immediate ceasefire. In a time of extreme bipartisan politics, having a two-thirds majority really means something. I'm Jewish. I used to attend services in Casper, and I now attend services at our local Redwood Valley Temple. As someone who's deeply aware of the pain and the suffering of the Jews throughout history, I cannot condone the repetition of such harm. What we have all been witnessing for the last 158 days in Gaza is genocide, and it is a genocide directly aided by America with our votes, with our money, and with our weapons. Since October 7th, over 30,000 Palestinians have been killed and over 72,000 injured. The death toll continues to increase, and on top of that, there are currently over 300,000 people trapped in the West Bank and facing famine. Johns Hopkins University published a report this week citing, "In case of a ceasefire now, we would be saving around 75,000 lives." It is not too late to make a difference and to save lives, but we need to show our politicians it is time to act now, to step up and demand a ceasefire now. Our voice matters, our money matters. As a city known for its commitment to justice and human rights, we cannot turn a blind eye to those living in fear and uncertainty. I ask you, members of the City Council, to use your influence and resources to call for an immediate ceasefire in Palestine. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else that would like to address us on an item that's not on the agenda?
My name is Francisco Hernandez. I'm a Willets resident since 2017. I'm a vegetable farmer here in this county. I'm also the former market manager for the Willets Farmers Market. Thank you very much for allowing me to speak on this issue. I'd just like to voice my support for the agendizing of the ceasefire resolution. I think it's an important opportunity for people to be able to weigh in on the local level and participate in our democracy here in the United States, and hopefully, we can all work together towards a lasting peace. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Hi, my name is Rachel Ossie, and I've been a resident of Willets for over 10 years now, and I am here to implore you to support and pass a -- sorry, I'm not good at public speaking -- pass a permanent ceasefire resolution. Tens of thousands of Palestinians have already been murdered, millions are at risk of starvation, and millions have been displaced. This is beyond a political issue, this is beyond a religious issue, this is a humanitarian crisis. I understand that we're just a small city, but I believe in our democratic process, and I believe as more and more cities pass resolutions, it sends a message to the federal government that this is what the people are demanding. 67% of American citizens support a ceasefire, and I feel it is our civic duty and as taxpayers to take every measure we possibly can to end this humanitarian crisis. Thank you.
Thank you. Before I move on to other matters, this is the last chance if there's anybody else present that would like to speak. Okay, then I'll --
Mayor, I'd like to just ask if we have another council member who would support putting it on the next agenda, so that it would be agendized and we could consider a resolution to join with other cities, as has been requested. I personally feel like it's been extremely painful to watch what's going on and not feel like we can do anything, and we do have. So I would like to put it on the next agenda.
I'm not willing to recommend putting on the agenda, but what I am willing to do is to take some time to do some research, take some thoughtful consideration, because in this role, it's not just -- we're not ourselves. We represent our community, and I want to make sure that if that's the decision I make to join your recommendation, that I'm doing it with the voice of the people who voted for me behind it. So I'm not saying yes or no, I just want some time. It was just presented this evening, it was an agendized item, so I'll certainly consider it.
But the way to find out if our constituents want to show up for an agendized item, that's the public opportunity for us to consider it and to hear the comments. Right now, we're not supposed to take action, but does anyone else feel like it would be worth having an agendized item?
I would agree with the mayor at this point. I want some time to think about it.
So, we meet with our city manager every week, and at that time, I think that it would be appropriate that if we want to share that with city manager, city manager only needs two of us to place the item on the agenda, and that would be the appropriate. I want to be careful, because public communication, there's a procedure that we're not supposed to take action, so I don't want to get too far into this conversation, and I think that it does require conversation, so those conversations to flesh out it should be had, so people have a time to really absorb and think about it.
All right. Moving on to public matters, we have none before us. Enactment of ordinances, we have none before us. Consent calendar, we have one item before us. It is the minutes of February 28, 2024. Any questions or comments about that one? Go ahead.
I was going to move the consent.
We have a motion.
I'll second.
We have a second. Is there anybody from the public that would like to comment about the minutes? All right, I'll call for the vote. Councilmember Connie?
Yes.
Strong?
Yes.
Stransky?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Mayor Rodriguez?
Yes. We have a very light agenda this evening. We have no monthly activity reports this evening, and then we have no commissions, agencies, or authorities business before us. The next item of business is the city manager reports a recommendation, and I'll turn it over to city manager Bender.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think continuing on the theme of a light agenda, I'd like to introduce Chris Dewey. He's in the audience. He is our new intro chief of police. He replaces James Connor, who has left. Chris comes from Missouri, but he has spent his career in Ukiah. The amazing things that I've heard from his experience and exposure to this community made him an obvious fit to fulfill the role of intro. We're still transitioning from James to Chris. This is his second week on the job, and we're looking at what we need to do, and we're going to look at moving ahead with staffing assignments and recruitment, and ensuring that the police department is delivering law enforcement and public safety to this community. So, thank you, Chris, and we look forward to working with you.
Welcome, Mr. Dewey.
Welcome.
One other item, I do want to note, last week, unfortunately, I couldn't attend due to scheduling conflict, but I have received multiple reports, both internally and externally, about the success of last week's California municipal cities' Red Wing Division events that we posted. Great events, we did it on the flop. Basically, Sarah Sanders, our representative for the division, approached us literally back at the end of January and said, "Can we do this?" We had a look at it and seen it was feasible and whatnot, and I just want to comment on two great team members, Kathy and Dolores. They pulled it together at the last minute. A lot of heavy lifting, but it was done, successful, and everyone had a great time. And Kathy, you noted that one of the Cloverdale individuals stayed the night, and they were actually seen shopping on Main Street. So, I think that's a good calling card for this community, that we can attract people and they want to stay. I had received a second message, or a message from Kevin Ingram, the city manager for Lakeport, and he said, "Hey, you guys are doing great things, we enjoyed our time. I'm going to spend more time with the museum, I will be back." So, this is not only a time for the community to shine and staff to shine, but it's also to get the message of what Willets is to a greater world, and I think we were successful. So, thank you, thank you for staff, thank you for council who attended. We get to do it again next year, right? Were you on the location? Thank you, Jerry, as he assumes presidency of that division.
Do you mind if I add on that?
Go ahead.
Yeah, I just want to give a very big personal thank you to Kathy and Dolores. I was concerned this was an opportunity for Willets to shine, and these two ladies, they just, they really took on the role. Every detail of this event was absolutely perfect, and it felt really good to be representing Willets with how well everything was planned out and put together. And as I was sitting there enjoying the evening and talking with other council members and a city manager about what's going on in their city, and we're sharing our thoughts, I was just thinking about the theme that I've really felt and the vision going forward is, a lot of it's been about planning, whether it was this event, planning down to the smallest detail, that we have really worked hard as a city to plan for a good future. And I was sharing with somebody, I may not be here in 10, 20, 30 years, but we're putting things into place that you may not see tomorrow, you may not feel it immediately, but I can tell you that this council, this staff, is making a difference in the lives of our -- we're affecting the future. And for that, I feel like really, really proud, and the way that the evening unfolded just kind of symbolized where we're at and where we're going. So I just want to thank you, you both, for your hard work. I dropped off some flowers, and yeah, yeah, just wanted you to know you're appreciated.
You know, same thing, me and Larry, the lead representatives there, but again, you guys did a great job. I've been to a lot of these at other places, and you guys did a really top-notch job.
The attendees were raving about you. They didn't know who you were, per se. I did point you out, but they just kept saying, "Wow, Willets, wow, Willets, Willets has done such a great job," and lots of compliments about Willets. So, yeah, that's what we were hoping, so, yeah. I'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you. That's all I have for tonight, so, two good points there. Chris Dewey, and recognizing the talent that we have.
All right. I'm sure we'll be communicating with Mr. Dewey from time to time. What is the, while we're on that matter, what's the timeline? If you could just remind us for the police chief.
Okay, we're in the middle stages of our recruitment effort. Kathy and I have a call set up with the recruiter for tomorrow to get an update. I receive weekly updates from Ms. Peterson, Kim Peterson. We have several candidates right now, I think there's about five or six, and one of them is relatively local, I don't know the details on that. So we are generating interest, both from within the region and outside the region, both at a command level, so we're looking at individuals who would do a lateral from a chief role to another, and other individuals who would be stepping up or leaving a larger department, larger agency, and who are at a captain or lieutenant level, who are looking to come to this opportunity. The timeframe is to review and create a candidate pool by the first week of April, and then start the interview process in the middle of April, and hopefully come to terms with the best candidate by the end of April. And probably a start date, depending on where they're originating from, either the mayor or the chief.
Okay. Thank you for that update. All right, we're going to move on to department recommendation. These are action items. We have adopted a resolution approving an amendment to the professional services agreement with Plan West Partners, Inc., to update the general plan use element and implementation of corresponding zone code revisions for an additional $75,000 using funds from the general plan maintenance fund, and I'll turn it over to Dusty Dewey, our community development director.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. And just real quick, thank you for the shout-out and appreciation for planning. I felt that and certainly concur with those comments, and I'm very proud of the work and the leadership of the council and the work that staff's getting done. It's very appreciative that we have a solid staff up in the community development department, and it allows us to get a lot of good things done for the community on the planning level, and maybe even more importantly, on the implementation end. And, you know, look forward to bringing you some good work moving forward. And one of those items, one of the more important ones, is related to what we have in front of you here tonight. So, we're in the process of updating the land use element of the general plan, and the last time this was done, it was in 1992. And, you know, this is the blueprint for meeting the community's long-term vision for the city, and specifically, you know, guiding the land use planning decisions, you know, towards that vision. And we're lucky to be working with Plan West Partners towards completing that general plan land use update. We're seeking $75,000 in additional funds to augment the existing contract. You know, so far, we originally scoped the project, recognizing we'd received three grants, totally approximately $257,000, and we've been using that grant funds to push this project forward. But where it's, we've been pinching pennies, we're trying to get a project done that a lot of other jurisdictions would spend $600,000 or more on, and where we fell short in funding is on the completion of the EIR to support the project. So, we had budgeted $58,930 to support that effort, and the reality is, is there's not an opportunity to get a comprehensive EIR to support something like a general plan land use element for that amount of money. To Plan West credit, they have gone above and beyond the duty in spending hours getting that document together, where right now, we have an administrative EIR completed, we're going through some revisions, and we're getting ready to release the public draft of the EIR to support this project. And of that $75,000, we're looking for $60,000 to support completing the EIR portion of the project. The other $15,000 would go to additional project scope to support implementation of certain items that are going to be directed by the land use element itself, specifically creation of the mixed-use zoning districts, both the downtown mixed-use as well as the general plan mixed-use zoning district, or general mixed-use zoning district. So that would be an amendment to our zoning code. And then we're also creating an overlay district to create buffers around creeks to support that important environmental resource. And then, and then the other thing is, we're creating a general plan land use diagram, but then we also want to be sure to quickly turn around and create the accompanying zoning map itself, and create the base zones consistent with that general plan land use diagram. So it really, if we identify a general plan land use change, a lot of this is, a lot of the efforts being driven to come up with new opportunities to create housing for our community, but if we change a general plan designation, if we don't do the corresponding zoning change designation, then we really haven't created that change itself. The funding source for the $70,000, we're looking to make use of the general plan maintenance fee. This is a fee that was established by the council back in 2014. It's a revolving fund that collects funds every year. The fee is 0.14% of the building permit fee, so it's essentially a fraction of a cent for every dollar we collect through building permit fees. As the report notes, there is money available in that fund to support this contract, and the intent of that fund is what it sounds like, it's to update your general plan as well as to complete the implementation of those measures and goals that are identified in that plan.
Thank you.
And I just wanted to note that I'm here to answer any questions you may have, and then we have Colette Metz with Plan West Partners available here virtually to answer questions as well.
So, a quick question to you, is with this additional $75,000, does that include, then, the re-zonings that are a result of the land use designations that come out of this?
Yeah, thank you for that question. So, yeah, it would implement the corresponding zoning changes to go along with the comprehensive updates of the general plan land use diagram.
Okay, so this is basically now the whole package?
Okay, thank you.
Any questions?
The $332,790, is that all grants, or is that grants and possibly some money from the city?
Yeah, so councilmember Stransky, $257,000 includes the three grants that we received to support this project. The additional $75,000 being requested tonight would come out of the general plan maintenance fee, which is a fee that's set aside to support projects like this specifically, which is a separate from the general fund itself.
So that's where the difference money comes from?
Correct.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your report and presentation. The only comment that I have, I think this is an important, an important project to get finalized, but the only comment that I have is something that I discussed with city manager Bender earlier today. I feel like since I've been on council these last five years, I keep hearing how important it is to update our general plan, our woefully out-of-date general plan. And I know enough now that, to understand that there are elements of the general plan, many of which we have completed and worked on, this being one of them, but what would really help me is a presentation in the near future that gives us kind of bird's-eye view of what it looks like to really complete an update of our city general plan, a roadmap of how we'll get the timeline for the success, as well as sort of a breakdown of what we've accomplished so far, what it's cost us so far, and a sort of a rough price tag of what it's going to cost us to get over the finish line. That would really help me, because I feel like in the last five years, I'm starting to lose the plot thread a little bit of where we are in this process, and I understand it's an important process, so.
Thank you. May I just want to, I think, just respond, and just to make sure I understood and heard you correctly. So we very much have been attempting to update the general plan. It's been a piecemeal approach, because essentially since, at least since I've been lucky enough to work for the city, we've been trying to do it with pinching, sometimes with grant funds, and sometimes, you know, trying to, like, for instance, with the housing element, we got that done for a fraction of the cost that other communities did, and the way we did it was staff spent a significant amount of time augmenting the consultant's work on that one. You know, same with the safety element, and so I understand that we want to provide some numbers, give some background on what we've accomplished so far, what's still left to do, and sort of a roadmap on how we're going to get there. Typically, ideally, you would be able to do a comprehensive, all seven, eight elements at one time. Unfortunately, those cards weren't dealt for, so I feel lucky that we were able to get these three grants to support the update of the land use element itself, but that still leaves, you know, a significant amount of work to do on the general plan overall.
Thank you. And I think that perhaps that opens up a conversation that the council should have. While I personally appreciate the efforts to save taxpayer money and to make sure that we're spending judiciously, I also think that this is a matter of such importance for our city as far as laying the groundwork for more housing, more economic development, all of those important things that we talk about and that are sort of on the back burner until we get our general plan updated. And so if it becomes a question of, does the council need to prioritize funding differently so that we can get this over the finish line, then I think that that's a conversation that should be had. So I think, you know, you say you're lucky to be here, we're lucky to have you, but I think there's a building sense of the time is on us to get this done. You know, when we identified the general plan update in this council goal of 2021, we had a three-to-five-year timeline on it. It's 2024, so we're three years in, and so I guess I just wonder, is it realistic to think that in another two years, we'll have the whole thing done? Or do we need to revise that estimate, and do we need to think about budgeting differently so that we can get there?
Can I add a comment to that? I think you make good points, but as you're speaking, I'm thinking, that's our responsibility because staff can only do with the fun. We have to allocate funds for them to do a task. And so as we've been meeting with city manager individually, discussing ARPA funds, maybe major K funds, meeting as a committee as major K, those are the tough conversations that I feel we should be having in allocating funds and making sure that we're all on the same page and we're moving forward on this goal.
Absolutely. But I, I think that if we had a, just an overview and a price tag put on it, that would help make those decisions.
I do agree with that, though. Yeah, yeah, that it would help. I think we all need to support to keep moving this forward. We, we all need to agree that we're going to continue to allocate funds for it. But it would be helpful to have a roadmap where, what do we have, which elements do we have left and what do we think it's going to cost?
Yeah.
I agree with that.
And where does the implementation of the zoning code, which also hasn't been done since 1982, fit into that roadmap as well?
Yeah.
Just as a former land use and zoning administrator myself, I think that the land use element is one of the most important of the plan elements. Some of them are mandated in order to get funding, such as the housing and the safety element, I think, also was. So we've, we've plugged a couple of, you know, chinks in the, in the dyke in order to stay current where we had to, and that's good. But, but I think this element is probably the most important element as, at least as a land use planner, a city planner, is setting the framework for what do we want our city to look like, what's allowed uses, what aren't allowed uses. But, but I think we should check in, what are the other pieces of the overall general plan, the other elements? We haven't visited them recently. But I, I think we have been strategic in going after the ones we needed to. And this one was, was critically important and really appreciate that we're finally getting it.
Stransky?
Yes, I think that we really do need, I agree with Greta. We need to know where we are and how much we spent and what we need to do to complete it. Thank you.
I agree with Greta. Want to start off there because I was curious what's next after this. Because I know we've been whittling away at this, but, and I think that as we go into the budget process, that we'll have a better idea. If you tell us, look, we won't, we won't be able to finish it this year for people, contractors, whatever, at least if we know that the next steps, three and four, are something maybe we can do in this budget cycle, then we can prioritize that. So that's, I think, I'm prepared to support this just because I want to keep the ball moving forward. But I, I think as we move into the budget, I, I want to have a roadmap so that as we allocate other things. We, we said this is a priority and I think it's something we need to do as we look for grants and, and want to develop housing for our residents. Honestly, I think that's one of the biggest concerns I hear from my constituents is, you know, the lack of housing stock. And so I see that as a priority. I honestly, I see that as a priority over national matters. And, and so that's something that sometimes keeps me awake at night, you know, thinking of how we're going to provide housing. Because we're not going to build it, but we need to make sure that any barriers to that housing aren't there and the general plan is it. So, so that's where I'm at. So I, today, I'm prepared to make a motion to support this.
All right, we have a motion.
Second.
All right, Stransky has a second. Any other further questions or comments?
I wondered if the Plan West person wanted to...
Yeah. What do we have on?
This is Colette.
Colette, Colette, would you like to add any comments?
Good evening, council and staff. And I just wanted to be here in support. This is a, you know, critical, important project and that really shapes the city in the next 20 years. And I agree, the land use element is, is a priority. And so moving forward with support for completing the program EIR and then moving ahead with the zoning amendments, consistent, to build consistency with the general plan changes, will put the city in a, in a great position to move forward with the other elements. So, thank you.
And I just wanted to, to give kudos to, to Colette and her team at Plan West because, you know, a lot of jurisdictions would have put a significant amount of more money forward for a project like this. And they would have established a timeline of something like three to five years to complete it. And so for us, you know, her willingness to build a scope of work around the limited grant funds that we have and recognizing that we were pushing for a timeline, you know, we, we entered into this contract and started in earnest on this project, you know, less than, than two years ago. And we're looking to, to meet that, you know, very, very condensed timeline. And there's a lot of, a lot of professional consulting groups that wouldn't have signed up for a challenge like that. And I really appreciate Colette coming forward with her team and doing that.
Thank you. Dusty, would you give us a brief reminder of the work that council and staff have already engaged in on this? I know last summer, we had some sessions here in St. Paul, we had members of the public here. Would you give us just a brief summary of what's already been done to get us to this point?
Yeah, so we've had open house community meetings with the public. We've had multiple meetings at the, in a council setting, including special meetings to develop various goals and policies to be included in our land use element. We've created a project advisory committee made up of two council members, local bills, local businesses, member key stakeholders in the community, as well as, you know, local contractor that have helped guide the document to where it is now. We've been successful in completing an administrative draft and we're nearing the opportunity to release the, the public draft of this, this document. And again, this, this moment is about, you know, about a year and three months from when we started.
Just follow up question on that. When you do have the public draft, will there be another set of public workshops or forums to explain that to everybody or not?
We don't currently have anything in the budget right now to, to support that. But upon releasing the, the public draft, I think if we do get significant comments, it may very well result in, in needing to hold another public meeting before bringing, you know, a final draft to, to council for prospective approval. So I'm not going to count it out, but I feel like we have got a lot of public comment to date. We've created a website to, to gather input as well as to create the opportunity for property owners to present land use changes. There's an interactive GIS app where you can go kind of tour the city and get an idea of what the existing zonings and interactions are within the city. But I'll say if we do get significant public input that, that we think is going to cause us to want to make a number of good, positive changes to that document, then I would reserve the opportunity to hold another community meeting on the matter. But we don't have anything planned at this moment, other than, of course, bringing it forward to council at a public hearing for potential adoption.
All right. And with that, I'm going to open it up to the public. Is there anybody from the public that wants to address us on this item? All right, hearing none. Bring it back up here. Any further?
Yeah, I wasn't thinking so much of comments about changing any of the recommendations and the land use designations, but more just an educational forum where you could kind of walk through that, the general public hearing, how you got to where you are and just understanding what a land use element of the plan does and what the zoning does. But, so I was thinking more of a educational forum.
I would hope, for me anyway, I would hope that that would happen at council where people would have the opportunity to speak and on the record. And we also would, all five of us would be present. And then, like Dusty said, if, if there are people here that have additional questions, concerns, or voice an opposing opinion, then we can always hold the matter over.
And Councilmember Strong, in council, I remind you that there is a project website. Willitslanduseupdate.com. And it does talk about the purpose of the general plan, how it relates to zoning, some frequently asked questions. So that is a, a good resource as well. And then certainly, you know, myself and staff is available to, to answer questions as well. And then your assumption is correct, your expectation is correct. When we do ultimately present the final draft to the council, we'll be providing some background information and, and reiterating, you know, the efforts that, and input that led us to the moment of presenting that item to you.
All right. We have a motion and a second, so we'll call for the vote.
Councilmember Connie?
Yes.
Strong?
Yes.
Stransky?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Mayor Rubree?
Yes.
All right, the motion carries, 5-0. And, thank you. Thank you. Department monthly reports are presented at the second meeting of each month. And so we'll move on to our city council announcements, communications, and reports. And I'll start with Councilmember Connie.
I attended the MCAG meeting on Monday in Ukiah, last Monday. It was a fairly light agenda and we talked a lot about the Ukiah Transit Center and the motions that are being taken there to make a decision and at least present the narrowed down choices of a location. And that's about it. That's all I have to report. I was sick all last week, so I'm a little, I'm a little fuzzy still in my brain, so I apologize.
All right, Strong?
EDFC, the Economic Development Financing Corporation, will be meeting tomorrow, I believe at 2:00, and I'll probably attend from here. The Solid Waste Management Hazardous Waste Authority is not going to meet until May 2nd. But there is a hazardous waste collection, April 4th and 5th, which will be at the facility here, the transfer station. And Sonoma Clean Power continues to meet on the first Thursdays of the month. So we just met last Thursday. And I don't think there was anything real significant on the agenda to report. Oh, can I just add that I just attended the Mike McCoy discussion at the museum, which was held, starting at 5:00. Actually, they started before. The presentation was at 5:00, talking about ways, a potential method of funding the museum primarily, operating the museum through a foundation, a public foundation. We've touched on this before. Mike McCoy is a energizing bunny. He's, he's amazing and I think has done an amazing job in Kern County.
I was just commenting that I met with him earlier and it was the same assessment I gave to remember Connie, that this man is a go-getter.
He is a real go-getter. But he has done wonders with the Kern County Museum and I think lit a lot of ideas on fire with, with us locally. And it is different, you know, it's a different community and different situation, but, you know, it looks, it looks like there... Oh, he also said he calls on the county in particular to have patience for, it's going to take at least a couple of years to get some kind of model such as this in place. So meanwhile, we certainly will continue to need the county's support.
Stransky?
Yes, I would like to say, first of all, I would like to tell everybody why I'm sitting down here. It's not because I like Kathy's seat or not. It's because I had knee surgery on a replacement of the knee and it really bothers me to sit in a chair and let my legs hang down. So I need an, an element so it's straight across from it. On a lighter note, I went to League of California City meeting with Jerry, was the, was a person that was in charge of that. And I found it very enlightening to hear what the other cities are doing and staying. And I think it would be really, I don't know how we could do this, but it would be nice periodically to have a, something where I could hear that from all of the other cities that are in our Mendocino group. And they're doing some wonderful things and we're doing some wonderful things, I think, also. But it's really nice to hear that everybody else is, is trying their very best to get it done, too. Thank you very much, Jerry, for inviting me and, and we had a good time.
I was going to say Larry, you can come anytime you want. Sometimes I'm in Rio de Janeiro, sometimes I'm in Fort Bragg. I think the, I think the farthest I've been is Blue Lakes and, and stuff. So the hardest part with some of those trips is getting there. You get there at 1:00, 3:00 in the afternoon. It's that drive back, sometimes coming back, especially from up north. And as you can see, even at this meeting, I don't think Fort Bragg showed up, Ukiah showed up towards the end there and, and stuff. So I think Larry, I gave Larry the wrong time and he showed up during our legislative part. And most of the cities were in agreement that, I guess, the PUC just granted PG&E one, one increase. And I think it was supposed to be temporary, but then there's another one coming down the pike. And everybody's of the mind that if PG&E fails again, they'd rather it be replaced with a Sonoma Clean Power model than a PG&E model that the taxpayers bail out. Because I forgot that we bailed PG&E out a couple times. And it's kind of like, I don't know, paying your hitman to come kill you again and again, you know? I mean, there was no, there was no love lost over PG&E at that meeting. I think a lot of the groups, in fact, Lake County pointed out, they'd love to be in Sonoma Clean Power because that's not an option for them, even though most of the geothermal energy that I think is being tapped is over in that area. And so I think that's, that's something to keep in mind as cities, if something happens there. I think there is a movement in not just this area, but other areas, that cities need to kind of come together there. I think the sympathy for PG&E is not there. I think everybody also wanted to say that folks like, I can't remember her last name, but Allison from PG&E has always been really great to work. Yeah, thank you. That those people are great, the boots on the ground that we interact with the cities, that those people are great. It's just the entity as a whole that instead of beholding to the, our taxpayers, our constituents, they're beholding to their investors. And I know it's the United States and we're capitalists, but most of our constituents, I think, are struggling to pay their PG&E bills. And I think that's, that's a real hard one. And while most people don't, I know my bill was pretty steep during the January, December thing there, so I wanted to point that out. But though Larry, if you ever want to venture with me on one of those long treks, let me know. I, like I said, if, and the only thing I had in addition to that is LAFCO. And we met on the 4th. And we had a workshop with the Mendocino County Water Works District Number Two. You know, there's a lot of small districts in this county that are out there that are struggling. Not, not only our cemetery districts, but a lot of these small districts that are kind of hanging in there. I mean, especially when they don't have the staffing. I mean, we, we as a city sometimes lament that we don't have things, but we have some of these small water districts, utility districts out there that should be doing Prop 218 hearings to keep up with their infrastructure and they don't because they don't have the professional staff. And eventually, they get to a point to where now they have to do these hearings and they have to go to their ratepayers. And ask for a lot of money, some of them are just wondering how they're going to stay in existence. So we have cemetery districts that, again, they make their money by putting people in those holes and those endowment funds don't, don't keep up with inflation. So they're struggling. And again, every time somebody decides not to bury somebody, that's money not going into a cemetery. So, so, so those are examples. My heart kind of goes out for those districts because they, county appoints, a lot of times, you know, we're all on a lot of county agencies. And sometimes the county can't find people to, that they can put on these districts. Some of these districts apparently don't, again, because of, you know, it's not like they can find somebody from Covelo who wants to go down and do it, who's willing to volunteer, but they're not a resident of that district, so they can't be appointed to those boards. And that was what makes it really hard. And some of these areas, especially with, on the coast, a lot of their residents are their summer homes and... the coast, a lot of their residents are their summer homes, and so they're not full-time residents. They couldn't even be anybody that could be appointed. So that's one thing. We, in addition to that workshop on that district, we also did a draft logo. We gave input on some logos for LAFCO. I think, like anything else, I know the city redid their logo. LAFCO wants to do something, kind of let people know. Most people don't know what a LAFCO is unless you're having to go before them to do some business, so I think that's the whole intent of that. So not a lot of time went into it. And then Monday, I'm on the Policies and Procedures Committee, so I chair that, and we are working out some policies regarding, trying to think of the right phrase, but basically, if an agency wants to do out-of-service area agreements, you know, I think we've had one, we've been, may come back to us if we decide to provide water to somebody outside, there's usually a plan for ultimately either annexing them or providing that service with, out of a health and safety thing. So that's all I have.
The League of Cities meeting that we were just talking about, the wonderful event, that happens every quarter in a different city. And 27, I was counting, 27 representatives from the different cities in Lake Mendocino, Humboldt, I wasn't sure if there were people there from Del Norte.
No, Del Norte didn't make it.
Del Norte didn't make it.
Crescent City.
Crescent City, yeah. So there were several counties there, and we each had an opportunity to go around the table and talk about our city. And I noticed that there was a common theme amongst everybody. We each talked maybe a little bit about water or vacant buildings, but there was a common thread amongst everybody, and it was all about parks and recreation. And I thought that was really interesting because we've been talking a lot about parks and recreation and how proud communities were, talking about the progress that they were making, how their constituents saw that as a value something in this time. And I was sitting there thinking, is this like, we're coming out of COVID and people are having an opportunity to go outside and enjoy their community? And so it's present on their mind, like, what is happening for recreation in our communities? So I'm really proud to say that we had some good things to say about parks and recreation as well, as we were listening to comments from others. The next meeting Jerry said was in Rio de Janeiro in May. And I think that at first, I didn't realize as a council member, we're all, even though Jerry is our representative, we're all invited and welcome, and it's commonplace for other cities to send more than one person. Jerry's our voting member, but the rest of us are always welcome to go. I attended one in Ukiah before. I felt very welcome, and I made some good connections at the meeting with other city leaders, and I'm looking forward to going to Rio de Janeiro to help continue to build on those relationships. There's a lot to be learned from others that are in the same position as us. What's worked for them? What are your struggles? It's good to be able to share with other people that are like-minded, that have some of the same challenges and successes. So I hope that we'll all consider maybe going to summer time or two.
Can I just add, at the city manager level, we meet at least once a year, all the managers within the Redwood Division. So, you know, the conversations you're having at that level, we're also having at the city manager level, and we do work with each other. We say, you know, hey, did that work? How did that work for you? Well, that didn't work very well. I don't want to know about that. So there, you know, there's a good amount of discourse. But, you know, once again, not only within the Redwood Division, but the Mendo-Lake counterpart, you know, there's four of us in Mendo, Mendocino, and there's two in Lakeport. We meet bi-monthly. It's a very big rapport that we have with each other. We know we can rely on each other. We sometimes just pick up the phone and say, hey, you know, we just had this odd experience. What did you experience? So, and Sarah Sanders helps facilitate that. So I think at not only the elected official level, but at staff and at management level, we do have a good relationship. And when our counterparts in the north suffered that earthquake, we were the first to, down here, Mendo and Lake, to turn around and offer resources and support to them, and they appreciated that. So, you know, I hope in turn, if we ever face a situation, they would in turn return their favor to us.
You know, the other thing I want to point out, that in the past, we were just part of the REMF insurance pool, and now that we're part of the greater, what's the insurance?
Sure.
Yeah, that a lot of these same cities now belong to that. We've kind of joined, so we're also interrelated because we have the same insurance folks. Not everybody, you know, some of the smaller ones have, but we're now more connected.
And the more networked we are with other city leaders, the more opportunities we have to advocate for our community, which is why it's so important that we reach out and connect with others so that, you know, when we need something for our city or an opportunity to learn. Just sitting at the table, I was thinking about conversations that I had with other cities, and they were like, what do you do when this happens? And we would share, you know, this is how our city handles it, and then, you know, vice versa. They would share thoughts and ideas, and it was so, it was such a good conversation, I think, at the council level, that often, we don't get those opportunities. And so it really, it was a good experience, and I can see myself committing that time on a regular basis, even though we have to travel, just because I'm craving that extra ability to connect and broaden the vision. You know, we try real hard not to be stuck in a bubble, because when you're in a bubble, then, you know, things, it's hard to make change and see change and see possibility and have vision. So, yeah, it was a good experience. All right, good and welfare. The only thing I've got to say is watch out for those sneaky leprechauns this coming weekend. On Sunday, it is St. Patty's Day. Madge is looking at me, leprechauns. Don't forget to wear your green. Other than that, I think we are going to recess and reconvene in closed session. We'll take a, let's see, that clock's off a little bit. Let's reconvene at 7:50 in closed session. And I'll close the, it just says closed session. Okay, and we'll report back out if there's something to report. Thank you all. Meeting adjourned at, let me check the time, 9:18 and nothing to report out.